Should.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I mean. And so you just. I'll be able to. So the. You know, when we. They never got all the last success. So.
Yeah, but then. As we were. They were the people for your heart. We made it for the.
And so that's.
Yeah.
A chair or. When she.
Yeah. So. Well, they were. Then it was. They were getting from the circle. Because he really. Maybe. Like how I was. Really. Like we just. I don't think. But we had to. I mean. Not like. But that people were just like. So. But I mean. Well, Jack.
You have.
I will.
You. And you're. And you're. And you know. And you're. And you're. 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 You're.
No, I. I. I'm not. I'm not. I'm not. You want. I'm. I'm. This is. Yeah. So. I mean. I'm. 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 I think. I think. I think.
Uh. I guess. Yeah, anybody is very.
You must be. Because. Yeah. I'm sorry. I think. I'm having a conversation. I'm like. He. Well.
Okay. I heard. Uh.
Before. Before. You. Put things on. So. At the very least, it will be reported.
Yeah.
So. Just.
No problem.
That. As.
Start with three D.
We can get started with the meeting.
Okay.
Um. If you want. And. I might do a little. Enough thing to me. I get us.
Okay.
One. From our lot.
So we have. Two applications tonight. One for the. Duquette Revocable Trust subdivision point point four. And it's one for the county management. How I see the. Having subdivision. We. Now, I'll tell you about a general summary for.
Um.
For each of them.
Yes, so for the the first agenda item is for the Duquette. Uh, revocable trust subdivision. Um, and that's generally located at eighteen George Street. Um, and what it is is essentially a shift of the shared lot line. Um, to being, um. Southernly. A few hundred feet. Um, and creating. An area. Uh, two thousand three, approximately two thousand three hundred ones to eight. To be exchanged. Between the two different parcels. Um. And it's a fairly straightforward subdivision. It contains less than four lots. And again, it basically shifts the other lot line. So, uh, if you pull, if you go to the draft. That of the subdivision. Um, and the George Street on the southerly end. Lot one is just north of that, which contains the two family dwelling. Um, and then if you follow the perimeter of that lot up to the north. You'll see, um, an area of. Two twenty one thousand three hundred fifty two square feet that had one's. Uh, parcel to the north. And contains office building, metal building, another building, and a single family dwelling. So that's the other parcel. Um. And we talked about numbers for not called out on these two that they are in our briefing. Um, you'll see the shared, they've seen shared lot line. Um. In between these two parcels and the proposed lots two. With. Um, to hold the high. To show that that will there be a lot line will be gone away and then. Um, further down into lot one, which is the dash. Those lot lines. And so the area. That this will outline, please, I'm going to have a brief. For the. Lot. Square feet. Of my own. Talk to that. Me. Which would be exchanged from lot one to the lot two. And Jeff, we're so just on community, but I think that's fine. So the this is, uh.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, Jeff went together, he communicated, they keep putting together this updated depiction. And the content of what he just handed out is not any different than the content of that. You were just going over. But it's just in the next depiction to show where it's. What's. The. Some. Time. To. To. Be. Between. And so it's, uh, so Jeff said that. Um, this would be seen as a minor subdivision. Um, and a type two. See. Um, there's very few staff comments. Let's go to creative difference. Um, we didn't receive any, um. And I'm moving to the separate work. We didn't receive any generated comments. Comments related with. Um. And. Um. And then, uh. The the minor staff comment, if you did have other than standard procedures. Um, it's regarding the announcement of staff acts. And so I think we're going to. So you'll see staff on. So. It's. 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 Would likely. John. But on your staff has. On the industry. For the. For the. For the. People. Who's. On. I don't know. That's. Five. That's. Seven. We can. There's. None. Is also, so it's just, um. Kind of like. They're asking to. The board to direct to happen and to. Um. Confirm that all the existing setbacks and, um. Placement of improvements are accurately reflected in some people. For comment number four and comment number five. Um. And then. Um, comment number six is the recommendation that. Being written to. Under the lean inspector regarding the status of all of the issue. From the. From the. From the. Back. Back. And from. From. On space. Or alternative. Um, that she. For cheating in an area of areas. For determination. Like that's the area. Um, and essentially, uh, I did have a conversation in the building inspector's office. After this comment was was written. And the building inspector, um, informed to be seen with this because of the lot line that was going to be adjusted. That lot line, um. Does not impact any other, any setbacks or change any existing conditions. Of setbacks that. And. Will be. Um. Who. They essentially didn't see the need. For a hearing. Or. Maybe. Or. Possible. Parents. As to your required success. That being so, um, staff so recommends that they have. Confirm that the buildings that there's office directly.
So the same for number seven as well. I think it's, uh. That that's for areas.
Correct. So is this what it is right now? This is what they want to. Move green. Then that's what it'll be. I can't see the green, but. I think. The green is where it changed the back essentially to. Focus. New. Parcel. That, yeah, should be merged with the northern parcel and broke money from. The southern parcel. Uh.
Okay. There's a note here on the right side. And I give you the existing task parcel subdivision and subdivision multiplication of mercury. And I am honest to. To. Well, we share the conclusion. So, uh. Essentially, we're reviewing this for sketch point in tonight. And then upon receive their second. Some of the staff. Uh, that's. Additionally, requested. The applicant to move to. Home. Final plan session. Now, this was, this was the gap that's been there for a long time. So that addresses, you know, at application time. Sure. I was gonna offer a little set to me from the staff. Again, the. I like that mean.
Um, and the reading of the conclusion was correct. We did have an internal discussion that this could potentially, um, depending on the the planning board's determination. And consideration that, uh, because this, uh, proposal is fairly straightforward. And limited to a very small area and a slight exchange that potentially it could be seen as a preliminary final. Um, tonight, but given that, um, that breaks precedent. And. Um. And it kind of slightly averaged from our code. Um, it would be up to the determination of the planning board. Um, but our standard procedures is for this to go through sketch plan and then come back for preliminary final. Um, we've, um, I don't have it in my fingertips, but in a class, there was one other. Um, application where the the city attorney, um, made a determination that. The application could move directly to preliminary final. In in the very first meeting and initially. About nine four. Um, so the the conclusion, um, within a staff report, as you stated, reads true. Um, that I would. I would say it comes to the. Description.
Okay. So. I guess when we get to application, if there's a number of notes which we can deal with the applicant. The. The. Staff. To determine. Whether these items are satisfying.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Discuss it.
Yeah, and, um, that checklist was created upon initial intake. Of of the application for the application to be more fully complete. To end bringing up to the board.
So. As far as. I want to make clear to the board, there is documentation there. I believe things can clarify. To pick a direction. With renovation, that's it. It's one kind of. Sort of sort of thing. Some questions that are raised here while I'm super. Information, so. The methods to determine if this can answer, so I just want to make sure that we clarify this. In our. The whatever the direction. Right.
You said, and. We do have the. The. I don't even make it a basket of doing the sketch and file tonight.
Um. I. I don't think it would harm this review, um, but I hope, you know, I always like to move forward with my own. Fashion of them, you know, not trying to speed up the process. Any further than absolutely necessary, and I think it's. It's good for the board to, you know, uphold this sketch review. Um, but at the same time, this is essentially a lot line adjustment in the very minor subdivision. Um, and as we're moving forward, we're considering with the zoning update right now. Um, creating a more administrative review process for applications like that. So. To save the applicant time and kind of. My review process. So from that, I mean, it it could double edged sword. So yes and no. Um, and I just want you to to provide time for thorough review. Um. But everything has been passed. So it's.
But specific to this application, you don't.
Yeah.
In a middle sense, we get the. Questions that are outstanding resolved. But we have the records that identifies it.
I think that's the key. This is the board feels to. Yeah. They have the checklist here. This is how we addressed it. You know, we've got some staff recommendations. And this is how we've addressed it. If we didn't expect staff to give this something, then get at least the board recognize that. And. Make better. For. Another question, the first application. Got a weird one. Right. This is the first one that I've seen that eventually. Uh, being at a product site or any portion of it is in an area that knows an archaeological site. Or a ship or archaeological site in the. We see that call the. The checklist that was in the stage.
Um. But it's been the environmental.
Yeah. It's not all stuff in fact. It's either on or adjacent to an archaeological site.
Which paper you on?
Uh, page number three. For sure that was safe.
Um, so this.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was filled out by the app.
Okay.
Uh, so part ones are always pulled out by the app.
Yeah.
Um, but so I think. But. If the board determines or agrees that this would be a type two, um, action, then. You wouldn't have to go on to. Completing a part two of the environmental consent form, so essentially part one is moved.
Okay.
So I think before you get to reviewing. All answers within the environmental consent form. We kind of touched that have been maybe as I've been whether or not you agree with this would be.
That required that it's a minor, doesn't it?
Correct. I think choose either and within, um, the updated, um. P R R, um, section six one seven one five. C sixteen. Um, it it pretty explicitly states within the part two list. Um. Of, um, actions that lot line adjustment experiences and other, I don't have that list with you directly. Um, but other minor amendments to the law. All within the. The. Two.
Yeah. Okay.
But that's a very good question. So. Ethan can be on your.
Do you have any other questions on the first application? If not, let me go to the second. Division. As well. Yeah.
Yes. So. Do you want me to jump in?
Anything.
Okay. Yeah, so the second application is for, um. Think about. Check. Title two county management LLC at subdivision twenty twenty four. So back in February, the board did re- review this as a preliminary sketch. Proposed subdivision along with a preliminary sketch site plan. Um, the site plan is not moving forward to tonight, um, but it is expected to come back. But potentially that our next meeting, um, tonight's focus will be just on the subdivision proposal as a preliminary final. In response to the previous conditions for this actual resolution. Um, and, um. All in all, um, this, this. This proposed, um, plan is a two sheet plan, um, with two, again, it it's a minor, um. A proposed minor subdivision. And essentially another, uh, lot line. I. Adjustment. Uh, we are involving parcels two zero seven point one seven dash five dash two. Which is owned by the Duquette Management LLC. And then, then, um. Ed Zukowski is here with us this evening and then to parcel two two one point five dash four. Dash one point two, which is owned by First West LLC. And Shirley O'Callaghan, that will meet this guy with us this evening as well. And that's. Um, and the the parcel that will be created by the. A shift of the southerly lot line. Um, for tax net parcel two zero seven point one seven dash five dash two, the Duquette parcel. Um, to the south, it creates a new parcel of approximately zero point one six five acres. To be exchanged, um, and directly merged with the Duquette. Can you hold that? Parcel. Um, and the the background on this is to create, um, better for me. With. The existing, um, integrated structure, um, on the subdivision. So that they can further develop that properly. Um, as proposed in the site. Proposal. But. Having been reviewed in.
Before we get too far away. I think I remember. In the packet two months ago. That Shirley O'Callaghan gave written authorization. For someone else to represent. I don't. Remember who it was. And. I don't have the.
Um.
The packet, but she did. Submit an affidavit.
Right, Mark, she gave the authorization for Mark McAdie to represent her. Mark. He was just shut up.
So.
Thank you, yes, and that's correct, and we did check all of those optimizations.
Or. Again, this this recommendation is for preliminary.
Preliminary. Yeah.
What we need. Something. That's where. The last meetings.
Correct. Uh, not the last meeting, but the February.
The February.
The last. Meeting.
The last.
Correct. Yeah, and, um, if you're looking at your staff report, you'll see that there are even fewer staff coming. With this. Page. Uh, review. Um, the first comment noting that this had been being reviewed by the current. The public plan. Um. And there is a note to that the applicant should provide written verification that you're required setbacks for the subdivision application. And that the site application is informed of your verification. So the I just, while we have this comment in place, I also wanted to just remind the board that the subdivision application, their choose. The two applications should be viewed as analog applications, even though they affect the same. What the. That do have the management LLC owns. And this application, um, the proposal was prepared by our license or bear. Um, so in staff review, we had realized that the setbacks on which you have proposals. Were reflected slightly differently, um, so we just have this comment here for posterity to ensure that. Um, the applicant ensures that all the different setback information. That we don't have zone. But we expect that that should be true and correct to the license or American service. Um, the next comment is to provide, again, providing the same zone data to be all. Information for things like open space for parcel two two one point five dash two. That one point two, so the. Post open space is converted. And previously, they're missing from the zoning table and still has not been applied. Um, that information is provided, um, but we recommend that it just be. So there can be a. Need to be a simple comparison of. That. Whether or not. That's the most. By criteria. For. Don't worry. Um, and then number two. Um, that's recommended that the applicant have all the information to any subdivision. Back for the. Final review. Um, I know this is something that easily gets missed on a regular basis, so it's just a reminder that I know that. All kinds of on site sanitation and water supply facilities, surely remind me that. 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 Patient. But that statement. How we. For. And then the rest is, um. Recommendation with.
So it's now six o'clock, if there's any other questions. That we can have. Here is. The. Station. Presentation. Let me show you. Set. The. Sit.
That's. That's.
Okay. Then I'll. Call the meeting to order. Now, this is the planning board's meeting for Monday, April twenty second, twenty twenty four, six P M. We can all rise for the. What. What. Legion.
In reply. The United States and America. And to the other religious sands. One nation. I'm a God. In the name of this law. The religion. Justice. For.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Jim McDonald.
Yes.
Rick Perry.
Yes.
Abby Musserher. Yes. Tom Coxer.
Yes.
Carly Neeler. Yes.
Thank you. So we do have, uh, two applications today. Their plan for application point four dash year six. Plan for application point four. We'll start with the. First application point four F zero six.
Uh, so twenty four national mix of both subdivision for the Duquette Revocable Trust subdivision point four. Approximately located at eighteen George Street. Their fastest to subdivide eight ten thousand five hundred eighty six square foot. Approximately square foot improved parcel, which is, um, confirmed with tax net parcel two two one point seven dash five dash eleven point one into two parcels. Creating a new two thousand three, three hundred and one square foot. Approximately parcel two version with tax net. Parcel number two two one point seven dash five dash seven. Including eight thousand two hundred eight four square feet. The location again is George, eight eighteen George Street. The two parcels are zone R two, the owner of tax map parcel two two one point seven dash five dash eleven. Point one is. Have revocable trusts and the other parcel two two one point seven dash five dash seven. Is the Duquette Brothers Construction. Being told being represented. And plans prepared by Jeffrey Burns, who is here with us. Um, here's an overview of, uh, the H two parcel configuration currently, um, George Street is. On the south. Wallworth Street runs north and south, um, along the two western frontages. Again, they're both zone R two. Here is the George Street frontage for the eighteen George Street and tax net parcel two two one point seven dash five dash eleven point one. And then the western frontage for parcel two two one point seven dash five dash seven and, um. A little bit of of the other lot. You'll see to the right. Um, and then just to help, um, better depict. What is proposed to be transferred, um, staff driven. Um, the overlay of the existing and proposed boundary line, since the boundary line to be essentially resolved. With. The. Opposite. With the approximate, and this is not survey grade, might mean that the approximate area to be merged. Um, just to give a, a little bit better of a depiction, but, um, again, Mr. Burns provided. An updated depiction that I think should also help support. Um, and then here's the objective, uh, copy of the subdivision plan and. Um, I've got the full copy right. Here, uh, existing lot one here with, which contains the two family dwelling. And then, um, proposed lot two, the other parcel up here, which is more of a rectangle. That contains four different buildings and potentially an accessory, but it's shed. Small shed, um, and has various setbacks, uh, existing setbacks, I should say, with them. But the focus is really this slot line here, the shared lot line and this proposed lot line. The proposed lot line that we show may have, may direct that best to. Going back to the.
The one I like to have is in your explanation, perfect. But where the proposed lot line is, is where there is an existing chain fence. That separates the actions of the construction. DuKowski Construction versus the residential property. So that proposed lot line is placed on an existing chain fence that separates this use from this.
Okay. Um, thank you for that, please know.
It's, there's a line type there, and that's what makes that proposed line type tough to see, that there's a fence line on.
You do, you have that.
Yeah, it's just.
Okay, okay, good. Um, so, and then, um, very similar to the depiction that Mr. Burns provided everyone this evening. Um, this overview shows the distinct lots as they stand today, the configuration. This, the blue area is the area to be essentially subdivided from lot one and provided to lot two to be merged. And then this would be the new resulting configuration of this two lots. Uh, and just quickly a summary of the, the comments. There was no departmental review comments that were received. Um, the subdivision classification is recommended to be a minor subdivision. The speaker classification is recommended to be a two, uh, a two action for. Fix N Y C R R six seventeen point five, speed sixteen. Which explicitly followed out, uh, a jump. Lot line adjustments. Um, and then staff comments, um, and which would be a recommendation to the client. Who is to ensure that the zoning data is updated to reflect all setbacks along the standard street. Um, and so recommended conditions are that this be a merger with the newly created parcel. Be directly merged with the newer parcel and set the inclusion, uh, with a final. And when, uh, final acceptance. It determines that the tax transparency verification, um, be completed with the City Chamberlain's Office. And satisfaction of all other departmental staff comments. Well, that's the end of this presentation.
Thank you, you have Mr. Burns here to.
How you doing? Add a clarify. I think everything is, is been answered, uh, as far as the front yard setbacks launched, Danish Street. We do show the, the existing residential single family dwelling is, uh, is really bad, so. You got the big size, is it five point one or six point?
Five point.
Five point one? So that's, that's the front yard setback there on Danish Street for that closest.
Yeah. Um, and I can bring that up.
Again, so, you know, so the pre-existing, not formally feel that, uh. This subdivision is, is for this merger is. Doesn't like to draw any, any attention to that. Uh, when, so when you ask the front yard setup, do you want me to actually show what the current setback is? Or do you want me to mention what I did as the building to this road boundary?
Um, I think just, uh, ensuring that the zoning table is updated to.
Should you like to see another column for that tax parcel seven?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um. That's not a separate tax. That's not a separate parcel, that is.
Tax parcel seven is an existing tax parcel, no, 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 the house isn't, the.
Oh, the, the, the tax taxable. Yes.
I didn't know if that's what you meant, or the five point one dimension, that's how I read it, was you showing what the existing building was relative to that front yard? Or relative to that street boundary?
Um, I think, well, so the minimum rear setback, uh, I think the proposed. Is, it, it's called out as forty six feet. Um, and staff wasn't entirely sure where the forty six feet was coming from. And even though it's kind of two front yards. We just were asking for a great, also a rare verification on whether or not this five point one feet. Would be also considered a setback or, and or how, how would you include it in the, the missing data table? So just better, I, I would say better incorporating the five point one, basically five point one. And providing verification to the proposed, um, forty six foot rear setback. For proposed lot two.
Yeah, you could easily put five point seven in place of that sixteen nine. Sixteen nine I showed for the frontage on Walworth, this is the closest setback to the Walworth Street event. And since this frontage of the lot taken was on Walworth, that for the ground. The wall, but the fact that there's two blocks, we can certainly derive the minimum.
There's, there's a lot going on, um, and so it's just for, the staff comment was more for clarity sake versus. Whether, you know, the proposed or to go to their ones.
So currently a staff comment for this place has. Definitely don't feel when issue works.
Yeah, because I don't have, I don't have to comment, but I'm certain I don't have problems because of the staff, but. Yeah. It's just a thing that, including setbacks, it's basically what we're talking about. Yes, and then again, there's no problem, I'll certainly get that table to. Check that setback on standard.
I was gonna say one setback is on standard for five point one.
Right.
And then the sixteen point nine, yeah, setback.
That was Walworth, that, and that, the fact that this lot was coming from Walworth, I was really just looking at Walworth, I didn't. We didn't consider that, it's unfortunate of that.
And then it says, uh, it's recommended the applicant depict a forty six foot rear, rear setback on flat parcel. Twenty two dot seven dash five dash seven, because this setback is not identifiable.
That's I think the only one. It is, and I, and I'm. I'm guessing the answer. And I don't know for certain, I'll have to speak to the guy, but I think that they did, they mentioned. The, the single, so this parcel will just give you some chronology. Tax parcel seven is made up of three pieces of title. Uh, so what's now one lot was at one portion in time, three lots. So the boundary line, actually, you see a dash line that cuts basically north, south through that metal building. Connects to the northwest corner of that tax parcel eight. That was the rear lots, that was the rear lot line for the three parcels. So I'm guessing that that's what the, the dimension is from the, the single family dwelling to that former lot line, but certainly. I guess my question would be, what would be the rear lot lines for this property?
And that's, that's not a determination that. Planning.
There's not a rear lot line for this property, but it's the answer.
I would expect that, but that would be something that I would.
Sure.
So this lot seven. Like you indicated, is made up of three different instruments, so. Portions of tile, portions of tile. What those are. Converged for taxation purposes.
We can only assume.
If you, we've run into this before, where this is a question.
Well, and again, we talked about precedent earlier, you know, precedent for the current board is precedent. As long as the subdivision ordinance has been in place, it's really kind of different, um, but yeah, like. This would be considered. In my opinion, a pretty minor change, you know, anything relative to. Questions relative to zoning, relative setbacks have nothing to do. With the line we're creating. No deficiency has anything to do with the line we're creating. Um, I have no problem itemizing. Block to make code office and money department happy. Um, really want to achieve final approval tonight, and the reason is. Michelle Lucas DuKowski is the executive director slash trustee for both properties. They have a buyer in place for the residential property, so they're under contract for that now. They're in negotiation. For the other portions or the, uh, DuKowski Brothers Construction portion of land for a separate buyer. So. While I'm handcuffed, I'd have to come back to another meeting, I certainly will, but I hope this is that. This would be something that would be achievable, so that that contract and these, you know, needs to be. As far as the, as far as the, the tax, the existing tax parcels. How it's packed, the reality is, is the dates, the D Ds are from the sixties. How it was merged? Was it, you know, was it done through a merge form at county level, was it done? Uh, I'm certain it wasn't done at a, uh, planning review process, but it was. It's taxed that way and hasn't been taxed that way for decades. So how it came merged, I don't really know the answer, but I know that they are sophisticated.
What was the deed dated that created merged lots?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, so there's not necessarily a title by for merging lots. That's something that would kind of fall to.
Two separate instruments.
Three separate instruments.
Well, no, two separate actions, that's what I'm saying. The, the action of merging lots for taxation purposes is different than the action. Creating lots for the assembled, so deeded parcels.
So it's from the seventies? Well, we got the sixties, sixty seven, and then seventy one?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are, those identify the separate deeds, correct?
Right.
Okay. At what point did the deed identify all three?
Never has.
Never, so today they are separate.
Yes.
Deeded parcels. So.
No, well, there are separate portions of title that make one tax parcel.
Okay. But the deed reflects what?
When you say the deed, the tax parcel isn't necessarily associated to a deed.
It shouldn't be, because.
That's why they don't get time to make it.
No, no, they're separate, they're separate actions. Completely separate actions. When, when an assessor takes a notice. Or taxation purposes, he's not necessarily assembling deeds.
He's not at all assembling deeds.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
He does have, it has to be done with one of two ways, either a split merge form at the county level. Or it's done in title. It has not been done in title, so we can only assume that there was a split merge form in the last forty years.
Okay, that's, that's an assumption that were made.
It's taxed that way.
It's taxed, but. Back then, the county didn't do that, it was done in the city assessor's office.
I was this in seventy three, I was done it that way, since I think seventy three.
They, they are the tax map, maps.
Right.
They're, um, the assessments are done.
Because really, merge forms have a process where they go to the chamber. Like, that, that is all part of that split merge form process, so it's not just the county saying, okay, we're gonna merge this. It's under the curfew of the city's guidance.
Okay, yeah, I guess I'm not making my point, my, my point being, there's an instrument that. That identifies the parcel of land for the separate parcels of land. Have these parcels ever been identified as a single lot of land?
Yes, right now, on taxes.
On taxes, but on title deed, we don't have anything in our possession that identifies.
No.
Correct, okay, that's, that's the question.
I'll tell you, though, that this legal description. Is gonna incorporate this law too, and it's gonna describe those portions of title that are described in. The nineteen sixty seven deed, uh, four ninety eight, four fifty, four ninety eight, four forty seven, and five forty two. Two nine four, that will lead one continue this description, so I think. Once we achieve this, there will be a title document that describes that, will continue this, so it won't be made of separate.
Mike, then it brings about another curiosity question, will the actions of this board? All in this new lot creation, the document that identifies the parcel of land. Are, are we tonight authorizing this be identified as a single parcel of land? In title or in deed?
We, you don't make the call entitled.
That's right, but the actions may very well do that.
That's the end, that's what the merge application is for, okay? That's why we, we ask for the merge as well, and not just the subdivision. So sort of people.
So if I'm reading this right, because, um, one of the photos that you had, you showed where the proposed lot is, is going. Essentially, the lot line adjustment is to. Bring into reality what's already being used, right?
Exactly.
But the partial driveway there, it's associated with the business, but really it's on the, that southern lot. So we're bringing into the tax map, what is the reality of. Practices, yeah, yeah, and the links, so that way these two parcels can be sold. I'll space for it. Yeah, right, yeah, so there's half a driveway in lot one. Two, excuse me, that then will get merged in with the greater business property line there. And it already adjusts to an existing chain of fronts. That's in practice, and the intent is for the larger lot that this is, that this parcel is gonna get merged onto. All those structures, all that land gets sold, essentially it's not getting broken up, so they're into this floor, okay?
So when you go to. Merge this, merge this. Piece of land in two. Lot seven. Moves greatly. Or the whole combined.
Absolutely.
And that will be fine.
Yes, upon a completion of the sale, you need, I guess there's the case that somebody back out. And then go wait for a new buyer, but yes.
Can you not create the, regardless of the sale?
No, if you, if you, you have this document prepared. And let's say I'm a buyer, and at the last minute we don't agree on a price. And let's say I'm a buyer, and at the last minute we don't agree on a price, then you don't have someone to convey it to. You don't have to wait till you get the buyer to convey. You wouldn't convey a deed just arbitrarily with preparation for it to be there to convey. You wouldn't pay to leave a piece twice for no reason, wait till there's a, a grant. For to give a. Smart construction of time. If the only thing that qualifies you is, so it'd be a little bit, so there would be a lot to description that closes. Continue the shake that described in two thousand, sort of, but coming from the title of the, the local trust. To be merged with lands. Of Robert and Duke construction company, making the continuous description of, it could be one continuous description of all of that. Two different parts. So. Someone who's going to get lot two, the fortune of. Deed in twenty twenty-two, together with all of the three deeds that are listed under seven. It could be one continuous description.
I. I'm going to disagree with it, because if you have. A deed that describes a piece of land. You have the development rights to that portion of land that's described within the deed.
I've had, had this argument with this board before.
Well, let me tell you. I was doing these assignments for that, as you know.
Me?
Um, and it was agreement, city engineer who oversaw the planning. Process, George Miller, now unless things have changed. Where your deed description gives you the allowance to develop to the degree of. Your, your compliance, your degree of compliance, okay? When I'm looking at this, I'm looking at the overlay. I'm looking at three separate parcels, and the lines are, are clear on, on this drawing. That it was used and functioned as a single parcel. Which there are multiple. Features within this single parcel that say. They, they get it, and they get it probably because of the tax map that identified one single parcel. You're, you're right about that, I don't disagree with that.
I can tell you right here across the street, actually, across the street from Wall Street, Messick. Owns land on George Street, on the north side of George Street.
Oh, yeah.
Where he has. A single tax parcel, made up of multiple deeds. And he tried to sell one of those deeds. He had to go through the subdivision approval, could not sell a portion of his tax parcel, even though it was a separate deed. You cannot, you had to give a subdivision. That's based on the assumption of how it's taxed, so when you say it's something, it's not just a blanket assumption, that's how it's taxed, this tax is one part of.
Well, the, the development.
The title deed gave you any development right outside of the purview of what your ordinance.
So it does identify the leaps and bounds of every individual parcel.
Right.
And that's, and that's what you technically. Should be building toward. That deed description.
That's what this is going to do. Absolutely.
It will do it, but. Before it's created, there's three deeds that identify. The composition of this site. Once it's done, you now have. Four principal use structures that are going to be on that single parcel, you're now going to have a through parcel. Going from Walworth to Standis Street. You're going to have.
Seven, dude.
You do, but. You don't have a deed, it's.
You're gonna, I won't believe it, you know.
You do.
You said, those are the farms. The city farms in, in, in the cows.
No, let's start this, let's do the city.
City, then we'll go to, we'll go to Messick, we're close to you.
Okay, well, you can go to any, any lot in the French Quarter that was identified as thirty-three P. At one time, you may have bought two of those parcels, but because. Your friend was in the assessor's office, he gave you the taxation leniency of. Creating one single parcel, okay?
I haven't related.
I, well, I, I lived through those days, so I do know. These, these allowances were granted. But then when the determination came down. I had deeped separate parcels, what is my legal entitlement for development? Legal entitlement it was for each parcel that you had deemed it, that is your lot description. And whether that was assembled for taxation purposes or not, your lot description is still within the deed. And if you had the right to develop a vacant lot because of a deed.
You can't get it right through a deed, the building right through a deed, you can't.
Are we getting ahead of ourselves here for what this is, this is a small lot line adjustment, right, for?
Well, here's my point.
But he's not, I'm not trying to build on this lot.
So the point is. If that deed identifies a single parcel. Then what we're doing is saying that any of the, um. Previously, previous actions are now going to become legal. Because of the assemblance into a single deed.
Well, they don't say that they're legal, we said that pre-existing non-conform, well, because you have a current.
The non-conformities is that they don't comply with their deed. They don't.
I guess I'm wondering if that is. The purview of the planning board, that sounds like it has to go through the. The zoning department, and I agree that those are probably good for the.
Certainly, I'd like to expect for the attorneys in the conveyance of the deeds.
But that's.
The outside of our.
I guess that's what this board is reviewing is.
No, but. The action of the board is going to create new leaps and bounds for this particular parcel. When you made that creation, then you're there for giving all other. Non-conformities within this newly created single parcel.
Well, this board is not, they would have to still go before the zoning board, I'm reading the stat format.
Actually, for the truth, we're asking, yeah, and get that determination of something right. Right for this ordinance.
Yeah.
That's where it's a little bit of a question in terms of time.
Right, and that can happen before the final flat review.
Well, keep in mind. We, we as a board are considering whether we step over that, the opposite, we're actually asking for that. Okay. We do consider this final.
Right.
Got it. But. In this discussion. We all need to be clear on what.
Yep, okay.
Consider.
And, and I've only added that, you know, you know. I can tell you. Open fault to you, gentlemen, your. Your history here at this board is, has functioned, um. I don't want the, the result of a board determination to. To grant that, uh, that grandfather status. Because. We now have three separate deeds, regardless of what the tax map says. Tax map is done by the map. The mapper obviously didn't read the deeds and, because the rules would have identified a single parcel. Today, those three deeds identified for taxation purposes. Three separate lots, but the way property is taxed. That is going to be what. The tax parcel is what is under the, the purview of the ordinance. Not the individual piece of title, but the tax parcel.
But it's really new, because what you want, we're going to achieve.
What is the alternative?
And we show three different types of.
No, you do, you already show.
Well, they're showing, they're showing a formal title, there's, there are four more titles.
You're showing a, a taxation. Lot description that in, incorporates three separate parcels.
Right.
Now, the action of this board is going to. Allow you to create a single lot line, a single description in a single deed. That's what I'm saying is what's troubling me. And they are being the same trouble that any, anybody else has.
I guess I don't know that the alternative, what, what did you rather see, you rather see the, the flag gets merged into individual piece of title?
There's, there was a reason that this was done in the seventies. I don't know what that reason is, that's.
They got. Different, so they started out with the, uh. Obtaining title and, uh, the, the portion on the western half. And then they got. Uh, also the way the single family dwelling is, and then years later, you could get seventy-one is when they got that in northeast portions. So as they obtained board land, they merged into the existing tax parcel. Now. You're right, I can't tell you that there was. The split merge full on file in nineteen seventy-seven, I, you know, I don't know, I don't even know if there's a database that would let me find that.
I can't.
Um. But I can tell you that if I tried to sell the single family dwelling. Which is existing on its own separate deed, I could not sell that without achieving the subdivision approval here.
I think you could.
I've argued it would be unsuccessful on this, on this, this board.
Yeah.
And had to go, had to go through a subdivision approval for that, actually, there's a lot line adjustment from. The way things were tied between Flatville and Messick.
So you probably couldn't achieve that because the county did not recognize it as a tax part.
It's actually Kevin, I think, that wanted the, who, who mandated it, the, uh.
But, but at the end of the, before you get with the flow, okay, then. Well, you would not be able to get it recognized tax designation.
Right.
From, you know, you'll, you'll give that in tax.
Right.
And without that, I'd be, you know, the sale would be.
There's certainly a question about when it was done, who was the tax mapper at the time, who was the assessor at the time, but I can tell you that I go out, shit, there's no one. You can have this, I am ice tax parcel, said I am ice as the current ownership, uh. Not arise, you know, the, the current owner, and then there's tax service done on various pieces of title, and. Those should be changelings, with sure that taxes have been met for those, and then tax map will merge. So there's not title document that did spot. There's that, that county process. And I say county process, this is the tax mapper process. Uh. And I'm sure you're right, I'm sure there's been. Eaves and clothes as to how it's been done in the last fifty years.
Yeah.
Um, but. The reality is, is this description, like, I, I, in my opinion. Adding a continuous description doesn't cause any issue. One is that we're not proposing anything, everything is there, so it's pre-existing, current zoning is, is what, what is the date of our current zoning?
They found some.
Yeah. Nine five, so then, you know, all of these structures are created nine five. So really think the, the description.
So what is the alternative?
The alternative is to, you know, acknowledge that there's. There's deficiencies if this were recognized indeed by a single person. And I named a couple, you know, there's. The number of principal structures within the lot. They're here, they exist, they've been recognized by another government agency, which is. The real property office of, of the county. They've recognized it, and all we're doing is.
I think you're a setter of the recognition as well. You're, you're.
I don't have an assessor today.
The, the city assessor, the person who collects taxes?
County.
So the chairman just says that they're paid, and the county handles it all.
Correct. Yeah. So. Anyway, it's neither here nor there. Um, so to answer your question, the way I see it, um, we are formalizing the creation of this single parcel. In any deficiencies that go with it, including non-conforming, uh, features within the parcel. And maybe it's time that that be done.
I'm not saying, you, and I understand your concern, but, but I think what you have to recognize is, is you have a situation here where you have buildings over. The title, former title lines, so you're not creating a situation where you could be allowing something, you're actually. Creating a document that says this is why it's allowed.
Formalizes. Exactly, and that's.
Which is good in my.
It, it's good because it cleans up a mess.
Right.
Good, and we're just.
Yeah.
Right.
And, and we're putting it into one single parcel. I would favor that, um. But I, I think it needed to be noted, and before I could even favor it, I think.
You're fine. When I react, it might not be, it might, because I don't understand, but you know, it's not necessarily. Yeah.
Do you know if the buyers are intending to do it with the property?
The buyer for the, I've only been told of the buyer for the, the residential duplex.
Oh, they're keeping the.
They're keeping the duplex, so there's going to be a new map.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought that they were selling both properties.
Well, they are, I don't know about the discussion for the construction, and I don't know where that stands, I know that they have a buyer in flex with the residential duplex. They're in talks with, I think, a few other parties about the, the construction company. Portions of.
I mean, any, any, if, if those buildings were demo, and there's a new building, they would have to conform. There would be no grandfather bid, yeah, or maybe.
Cover a lot of territory.
Yeah, yeah, man.
So ultimately, again. Your request is that it is the. Redesigned or. Into a single.
He, Jeff already said he was doing that, he's going to identify. This newly created lot as a single parcel as described within the deed.
Okay, so that's a fourth. That's going to be the fourth parcel. That accomplishes the one.
He's going to make it one parcel.
I mean, yeah, the only danger that I would give you with the thinking of it as fourth parcel is that. That subdivision is based on the merger, so, so it's not. It's a portion of one piece of title merged with three existing pieces of title that make one mark. And I will describe lot two as a continuous piece being, you know, the twenty-three hundred and one, twenty-eighteen square T coming from the title of instrument number. Twenty twenty-two, three two three, three forty, merged with this three. Pieces of title that make up seven, then I'll. Carry it through with one continuous description, so there'll be a couple of descriptions in that deed instrument, but the final description will be one continuous description of all the lands.
And then ultimately. I guess get back to that.
Um, certainly.
There's discussion about getting written determination for the building inspector on. Area, uh, potential area, potential experiences. Question. There was. It's already. Yeah, and in this case, I want to make sure that we get it inside and use. Something that goes with. With the file, it's, it wasn't a discussion since I. Make sure there were no other review comments from other city departments per se.
Yeah.
Obviously, a condition for merger. He's a problem. Lot seven. City city general's complication taxes. Yes, some people ask condition.
I just want to remind you of that on this board, the final.
Right, that's something discussed about combination of setbacks. Okay. Uh, I guess the next question is. The board's feeling in terms of this, you know, down against the request. Clarify some of staffs. And the full recommendation against what their draft of reasons says what staff's feeling about. But then. Being this sketch plan directly just eliminated.
Just a point of clarification. Uh. Yet we don't. Uh. The. Building inspectors. Comments or. Client's uh statement. Um would be part of the record versus. We should make it contingent, make the approval contingent that. You you give the comments. And that the charge be applied to. That. Is that accurate?
So I guess the the real question is. Do you give a petition for approval to that? And the building inspector comes back in terms of variances. In more efficient ones.
The the conditions not met.
Correct. It's it's a then it's.
Yeah.
Now.
Then the process starts all. I think that starts all over, but we'd be like, we could go then to the zoning board and try to achieve what we need to and then come back to you for detail, but yeah. I mean, the the reality is the the building inspector office did look at this. You did show them. So I don't expect that they're gonna come back now after they've already come with you at once. I don't think they're gonna.
No, and that's why I asked the question the way I did.
Yeah. I I know that they they did offer some some input. I haven't gotten any of that input and writings. I can't go to speak on it, but I I didn't know just from presidency that that. There hasn't been communication between the community development office and the building inspector office. So I can only assume that if there was a need for variance, that would have been brought up by then.
That's my. Question.
So they could develop further comment or the generally agree with. Looking at this as a sketch comment.
Therefore, I can make this lot of course given from continuous type and stuff. Does that mean we're gonna get done tonight?
Hopefully, that's what we're looking.
Sound good.
Okay, so we. Also consider this a type two secret action. Everybody is written with that based on staffs. Reduced. Okay, so no further action required through the seeker.
Let's just. And because it was drawn up early. This archaeological site that. Was stated as answered as yes. What is that supposed to?
It's an automatic answer, so the the uh seekers. Seekers kind of involved. So it's online, some little fill out and then state actually answers. Some of the questions. They actually itemize it. I think I'm back page as to what those answers are that they don't tell you as lie. Okay, uh for instance, like I know that it was a remediation and I had to do some digging to find out the remediation numbers actually due to that messy property. Was it a a a move? And we did, we did itemize those.
Yeah, I don't have any. I mean, I was a little brought up in the pre meeting. I don't have any other questions about it, I guess, since there's not gonna be any developments there. I guess maybe you're aware that it was selected, so if it was something that you automatically put in at the seeker form from New York State. Uh, you know, I. Guess for somebody with future, some sort of future.
I don't know. The reality is that. Come back. Very odd places relative to, you know, and.
Be curious.
Quarter of a mile kind of thing. And the truth is, I think anything. In that district that draws the district, there's probably gonna come back something. Sure. But like you said. I'm not real interested in what it is because we're not doing anything.
Exactly. I guess, uh, the only point to bring it up was that, you know, was it a mistake? Hey, and if not, uh.
It was what they answered.
Be aware for any future development of that property if it's gonna be built in.
All right, I'm glad they answered it, or I'll have answered it differently. I have to know that I would be kidding, which I know.
All right, sorry to bring you up.
Because they are, they use the same answer for. Is this wetlands?
Yeah.
Or other regulated water pipes? And it's a yes. So what this question is, is actually not the buildable site.
Right.
It's the uh more of a district district kind of question.
Okay, that makes. It could be platform bag, this trick during that. Sure. Um, they you know, it's gonna be something like. Yeah, so.
So actually, one last question I have in this. I don't even necessarily question this person, but I just want staff to clarify it. So the record is. Uh, it says applicants don't need slide evidence that Michelle Luke got with this as the executive. Executives of Robert and the local trust and authorized signer as trustee of the good brother construction.
That's been provided.
Okay, so we have an affidavit, but you have whatever record we were looking for.
Yes. We have that one. Um, and that, um, so. It was. And the we will uh charming for the uh basically a sort of appointment. As being eventful, eventful of the trust. Um, and then also a a a doubt in trust of a will for that location.
I can't remember the names. So one was a trustee document, the other was a uh deputy.
Yeah, we appreciate both of those. Uh, but I can bring them up.
But I just want to recognize that staff is satisfied that.
Yeah, absolutely. And those are part of the.
One other comment, uh, Bart, do you have a copy of this map? It's gonna get up to us too boring.
You want?
Do you have a copy? Did you use a copy of this?
Just the night.
You have a copy of that for the record then?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the all three of them.
Okay, um. Any other comment from the board? If not, we do have a public hearing associated with this uh. Application. So. To open the public hearing. For any comments? Nothing being heard. I'll close the public hearing. And satisfied. Seeker, clear through action, but actually I believe it's addressed and the draft resolution is well recognized now. Applicants generally responded to. Comments and then we do have a number of positions that they are willing to satisfy. Part of the application. And then we have a draft resolution, uh. Twenty four oh six, I believe, definitely. For consideration.
So with that draft resolution, I just wanna point out on uh page two. At the top, it's about the whole subdivision that's been served in the draft confusion. And when it sounds like reasonable for for the approval, it should be sketch preliminary. And then again, now it should be such exceptional preliminary. Just for clarification.
So. Do I have a motion? Be specific on the conditions for a motion. For the draft resolution with our conditions. I don't know that I can. Bring up all the comments we brought up previously, so I know that I want to take the first paragraph.
Same. Ben, I. Provide my understanding of what I heard and the the board can confirm and restate if they agree. Uh, it sounded to me like the board was in agreement to accept. All the stat funds as recommended conditions of approval. Uh, so those are conditions one through ten. Uh, and then it sounded to me also that there was one additional condition proposed that would have been proposed by Rick Perry. Which was uh along the lines of acknowledging, um. I don't have these personal numbers that propose, we'll say acknowledging that propose. Uh, lot two. Um, if all of the um. Previous. Included lots within that configuration. Are accepted that this would propose or create deficiencies that would be created. Um, if accepting the post lack shoe and then. Um. I don't, I don't. Am I going too far?
Uh, yeah.
Maybe you can restate it better. I'm just trying to backtrack through my notes, but. Go ahead. You might be able to say it better.
And and I'm not gonna stay. Restate it in terms of a a motion, but essentially what uh what I had said is that. We we recognize that. The. Parcel. Had previous. Nonconforming. Status. That the recognition of the lot semblance uh by a single deed. Uh. Will no longer. Carry the. We don't want to say it like that.
I I would actually say that making one deed clarifies the encroachments that exist based on title maps.
That's a better way of place.
So what we're doing is rectifying these encroachments that exist over title batteries because we're gonna make one title.
Yeah. The the encroachments of, just to explain that, the encroachments of the title boundary are the deficiencies. As described within each individual parcel's deed. That's where. The through lots come come from. The multiple structures on a single parcel.
You want all of that?
No, but. I can remember how Jeff stated that.
Why incorporate, like, G was the trick?
Yeah.
To incorporate. And the board's words. Want to continue with the description.
So it would be the items, the staff comments, one through ten. And that one additional comment.
Okay, yes, to incorporate one continues the description for proposed lot.
Well, her tax parcel set, her proposed lot seven. Or is that part of seven? Yeah.
Proposed lot seven.
The new proposal.
Okay, I just wanna remind the board that. Within this, because proposed subdivision, but there is no definition of a proposed lot seven.
Yeah, they we need tax parcel seven. So the continuous description of max parcel, it'll be seven.
It'll be.
Existing, but existing part of seven merged. With lot two merged in.
Describe that. In your third map.
Yes, that move is gonna have a strict. The last map there that is shows upon completion of the mergers, I'll have a continuous title management. To this. Where is that? That is becoming a part of it.
Okay.
So.
So if no one else has anything to add, I think we've got. General conditions outlined. And a draft of the resolution. That I need a motion on.
What I'm what you're looking for. For quick.
I I wait for.
Okay.
Request.
I have something.
I'll make a motion to uh pass the draft resolution. Uh, twenty four dash oh six, incorporate staff comments one to ten. And also incorporate the description for one contiguous D description for the merger merger of. Lot two into tax parcel seven. There's some more.
I second that motion. Sorry.
There's no any further discussion? Your call, roll call.
Jim Abdal.
Yeah.
Rick Perry.
Yes.
Abby Mercer, you have Tom Foxgrove.
Yes.
And Carly Berry. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, we did super well.
Skip it. Cause uh.
I'm sorry, I did that. Did you? I'm just making sure how much I can get. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Jeff, hold on a second.
Afterward.
Great. Second, uh, application, I explained for application twenty four dash zero one.
Uh, twenty four dash zero one for proposed subdivision. Title of the capacity management, how all the three subdivisions come through. Uh, approximately efficient. Kind of looking to the app, so the test is to divide a four point zero eight. That's. Net acre unimproved parcel, uh, which corresponds to tax parcel two two one point five that's four, that's one point two. Into two parcels, creating the zero point one seven acre parcel to be merged with back on parcel two seven. One and seven that's power dash two and three. Three point nine one acres at three A. The location again is at three Avenue, um. And approximately at uh ten fourteen through the app and just that for their parcel, just that for that address. Uh, the zone zoning for these two parcels is R two. Me and Alders are here with us tonight. Uh, we have Ed Zupowski for Terrace West L and P and Shirley O'Connell for the excuse me, um. I quit those. We have Shirley O'Connell here as a teammate for Terrace West L and P, the tax not personal two two one point five that's four. That's one point two and Ed Zupowski, you bring to us in the L and P. Um, though the plan for her is uh. It's representing them and not it's Mark McAfee who's here with us this time. Um, and uh just a reminder that this was uh reviewed as a sketch plan proposal um for the twenty four February meeting. Um, here are the two properties again, the two tax cap tax not parcels. Living in school area. And there's one R two. This is the garage for the the. Uh, for the ten fourteen really app, which the capacity management owns. And um this is uh. A raw depiction, um, with. Uh, street view of the. Street view of the two, two properties, the, the apartment area of the shared boundary line. So we know section is the proposed area to exchange, which is currently owned by Terrace West Allen Street. And that's tax not personal two two one five dash four. Dash one point two. So the boundary line, shared boundary line, which is shown slightly to the side. This is the view of the vacant parcel owned by Terrace West Allen Street. And the party, she was other, suddenly the area of the Duca's management house property. And then this is. Overview of the proposed subdivision plan. So this, this shows the Duca's property, the existing building. And then the existing suburb of the lot line. Those lot line and then this is slightly better definition. Showing again, showing the existing structure on the Duca's company to the left. The area to be subdivided from the parcel two to the south. And then merge with the Duca's property. The department review comments were that there were concerns regarding subdivision by higher GPW and our services or. I believe a previous comment from the nine one one office for addressing was that the property to the north, the address. As fourteen, Katie Avenue versus nineteen fourteen, so. Those comments will may have furthered the site plan here in parcels. And per the building inspectors office, their influences were achieved. At the broken team, the zoning board of appeals moving and there were no other reports. Provided for, for this. Phase of, of the review. Stat comments are the, or the zoning data to ensure that the correct existing checks are accurately depicted. And including, included in the zoning table, again, knowing that a lazy plants, lands are there. Has, has created this and provided their smacks signature, so this should be enough confirmation, but we do want to. Recommend that that confirmation be made and then additional recommended recommendations for conditions are. That the, the newly created lot is directly merged with the modern parcel. And again, the tax currency verification is completed with the city government office to ensure there are no back taxes or meaningful properties. And then again, satisfaction of the department review plan, so very straightforward. That I'm always. This presentation, but I'm happy to bring up.
So as part of changes, the last time I did update this on the table, I was using a different zoning table, it gets into a, I can't remember the exact. But the different levels, so I used the correct one on that and I made the changes so that. Yeah. Yeah, I got the wall there for the side yard. So I changed that and then added lecture and. So again, you do have, that is an open comment, like stat on number one, it's only tables. Working to them on some of the. Couple of questions maybe.
Okay.
Adding a note, number two, that it all about on sanitation, water supply facilities. Number three comment is that we can decide to want any other city department. Comments, which it sounds like we don't have that. At this point. Comment number four. The condition about version. This one. Parcel needs to. Parcel five dash two. I think that's going to be a company, there's no one to complain about merger.
Yeah, I added that note there to be merged to the merger, that parcel before we had on T two. That I added on T two as well and the attorneys are gonna, I mean, I'm gonna write a legal script to include this whole parcel. Those items really emerge, it's gonna be. That parcel is gonna have its own legal script.
And then number five is. Standard recommendation about the city, city general, let's just say, I'll say that.
Yeah.
Any other questions? The board? If we have no further questions, did you have any other thing? No. With no other questions, we do have a hall of hearing associated with this project. I'm told in the whole period for any comments. With no time to be heard, we'll close the whole period. Again, this is a type two action, minor subdivision, thirty two to minor subdivision back in February. We do have a draft resolution twenty four dash zero one. Essentially what it says. Preliminary plans presented with obviously stats, stat condition for stat costs.
I can make a motion. To step in when the plan is moving to twenty four dash zero one. And that incorporates the conditions of the stat.
We have a motion, we can have a talk. Right down. Any further discussions? Roll call.
Jim Abda.
Yes.
And Carey.
Yes.
Abby Mercer, yes. Tom Foxgrove.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Now a couple other business items on the agenda. But yes, that's all day, my staff. Needs that I have it.
I think that, I think that was supposed to be doing updates. So just the, the process for the company update, we just had a public workshop last week. The process is moving forward and swiftly is possible while we're incorporating as much public comment and opportunities for public action as possible. And we're in line to have. But proposed draft, drafts informed by the end of June and are targeted to hopefully have. A full proposed document, zoning update, by August, is our hope.
Do you remember the date of our next? Public workshop?
Are, we haven't set a firm date for the next public workshop, but it's targeted for the end of May. I believe, yeah. And then we do have a pack meeting tomorrow night.
If you, if anyone on the board hasn't had a chance to see the workshop on like Zoom or. Attend, I would definitely like encourage, there's a lot of different information and proposals. To be seen, you know, if there's an open comment period at the end after presentations.
Well, we, once you're done. When we get ready for the presentation, we've been, which we didn't have in. And yes, I, I believe that will be provided. There's going to be, they'll, they'll be in a final presentation, definitely inside of the council, the proposed adoption show. And leading up to that, we will have, so our fourth public workshop, we're targeting for the end of May, but. Once we start putting all of this to draft documentation.
I think more is like the planning board members so that we know what's going to change.
Yeah, I would encourage you to get involved now and start reviewing some of the documents. I, if we want, I can have an internal discussion and see if we could formulate a presentation direct for the planning board. And otherwise, we'd encourage you to watch and attend, participate in the next public workshop. The next workshop.
You know, you know, final in August.
Yeah.
Right, and then they're going to city council, what?
Then it would start the, the proposed adoption process.
I'm just wondering, like, is there an election at the end of the year?
There is.
So.
Yeah. Ideally, we would like to have it fully adopted before the end of the year and we should have enough time if all goes well. And we've been trying to incorporate the council. Go in, in the entire process, I think that they are fully aware of the proposed changes. And we've had several council members attempt every workshop to date and then also provided. Presentation to directly to council two weeks ago, so we feel like we're trying to keep them going. All along the way as well, so hopefully, once we get to the final proposal and the adoption phase. Hopefully, there will be no questions left on the table. And also will fully understand the proposals and. Hopefully, we'll be, we'll be okay with that all as well. But that will all remain to be seen because it is a public process and. And they can take on. The shape of it sometime.
The workshops recorded and posted.
They, they are, yes, they are recorded and posted. I have to double check on this last one if it's already, but we do have a project page, I think I mentioned it to Talib, but it's been a while. So we've got the My City of Plaxford Public Invasion Platform. And within that, it is a project page for Sparko of Plaxford. And that has. All as much background information as we could provide and. As much detailed information to help the public all along in the process and see where we're at.
Is that what the workshop's supposed to be?
Yes, yeah, so there's meeting minutes for pack meetings and the recordings and notes from the public workshops along the right hand side. And then when there's an announcement for a survey, like an announcement of the next public hearing or a survey for the public to. Fill out, that's typically close to the top of the page and then the middle of the page is the background. And then the bottom of the page, you can do additional surveys for and, and follow along in the phase of the project, the project timeline. So, yeah, it's exciting, what's going on. So that, that is like the main status update, I think, that we have right now. And then other items of business, it's just to, I think Bart brought the. Bylaw, any law platforms at that time.
Thank you.
For avoiding others to, we just come into a year and the bylaws were shared approximately two months ago. Yeah. So the board should have those and have.
Things are.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Previous conversation that last night, um, the board had a discussion about the acknowledgement of. Projects that do special things.
Yeah, exemplary projects.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, and I think that discussion originated from the February meeting with the Duca's cycle review. And how great it was that that was creating. A to make, was proposed a sensible housing and. Reading.
Adaptive reuse.
Adaptive reuse such a structure, yeah, exactly, and that it was in high importance. Adopted and comprehensive plan. And the proposal was that we find a way to celebrate and give thanks to advocates that the planning board to do those requests, right? So and then last planning board meeting, we provided a stat update that that idea was brought back to the community development. Office team meeting, stat team meeting and discussed and we, the whole team has their thinking cap on and how, how we can create something. So we haven't arrived at any conclusions just yet. And we may need to revisit the topic.
I mean, when you look at developers, you know, they, they come through the regulatory process and then there's nothing but enforcement. You know, you go through building codes enforcement, you go through fire codes enforcement. Everything is, all communications are on the enforcement side. I think it's good to bring a positive aura to projects. I think when you look at some of the things that the Zekalskis have done. Look at the four K house across from the train station. They took an abandoned warehouse and they made it, you know, a beautiful complex out of that. And we see pockets of these projects all over the place. We just not recognize and embrace the efforts of developers. And I think it's important that we stand up and say, good job, you know, we're proud to have the work in our city. I don't know with that, you know.
Like an sustainability work, you know. I know, I am proud of them.
To what extent have I allowed this great suggestion like that? You're a foreman.
Yeah, but I know, I did announce me that like within our. Round.
I would, I would love to how, how much it conforms or aligns with comprehensive plan and other. Guiding documents.
Yeah, it's more like. They're like carrying out like concrete and getting the transformer shit, but we'll do it now.
Yeah, I think it's, you can include it as a recommendation to the applicant that they look into it. And I mean, we provide information on tax credits for the sort of profit use.
Yeah, if you're a knowledgeable person on it, you said, I know how to get seventy five percent of that eighty four bond, I said that or something, I'm sure.
Especially when they're ADA accessible, well, like they would probably get a lot of the, the infrastructure.
Yeah.
And I think you're ready to.
Get my, my firm to do it, that's probably a different story.
I, I. Then I point you to the bylaws.
Yeah, I read nonprofits doesn't. Yeah, I work in nonprofits, it doesn't free.
So last item here, uh, to tell you about creation of a hard copy, planning board reference binder.
Yes. So, um, the reference documents, the, the base documents. For finding what to rely on, um, were shared out again. Two, two months ago, um, which the bylaws were part of that set of documents and, um, we had discussions here and there. About the, um, the usefulness of having a hard copy binder of all of those documents. Uh, before we dug into printing all of them, because a lot of paper. We just wanted to check with you all and confirm that, um, you know, that confirm upon everybody who would like such a binder. Um, a big ring to bring in. Um, I think you could share some.
Were you saying that they would bring them to the meeting, you want to have a time to meet?
Well, so the, if, if, if we did, if each individual board member, um, got their own binder, they could either live in our office. Or you would carry them with you, um, but that way, for instance, you know, when the discussion came up this evening. With the Duca subdivision, everybody could have jumped into, you know, their binders and.
How many boards are you saw? I mean, how, how much?
It could be, I mean, I don't, I haven't sized it out myself, because I have, probably something like that.
So maybe if there's.
Cause this has subdivision, so like.
Three of them scattered, arrayed on the table as reference stock given, so you can grab a kind of share and they sit here.
Yeah.
And they would go forever, right? Long journey wise, I mean, it wouldn't just be this.
Right.
Door, it would be passed along, so it would be.
Until changes are made to certain documents, yeah.
If what, I could check one out, take a home, do a little light reading one weekend.
Yeah, absolutely, or I mean, they could be, they could be configured a couple different ways, but. The way I almost see it is every board has their own signed binder. And you can either leave it in our office or have it travel with you. If you, if it travels with you, it's your responsibility to bring it. You wanna have it at the planning board, you have to bring it. If it's in our office, we'll just, we'll bring it down the night of the planning board. Um, so, but, and that way you have like.
City's not working to a visual on it.
Well, um, that could, that's another conversation, so that, and you could look at that as well, um, it just won't be in the video.
And I think it's tough to when you start looking at like those are on the following, there's scope.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's hard to. Data, yeah, there's, you're on a, on a device with people and really, I'm looking this up and.
Right.
And I'm thinking about it, I'm like, I'm gonna go and ask someone to see it, but I, yeah.
So I had a little my, I first, when I first came on the board. They gave me a copy of this moving ordinance and had actually a copy of these historic guidelines. I don't know if anybody else that is.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, I think having a copy of the two that are on the table that you could bring down is for the leaders, we can do something. And I, we, like you said, we've got electronic versions of these with you. And, and cans with you, if you want to outside of this or check it out, take one. I don't feel like I need a full copy, if you'd like us to on Apple, it's the board's chair, it's how you do it. Honestly, honestly, you just come, I would say almost every meeting.
Yeah.
Same, like, I'm gonna bring my.
Confirm things, so I don't even know where you, I don't even know if you can find this historic buildings. Yeah. Uh, publication on the city's website, I don't know if that's there, you're gonna have to search it in. Secretary, secretary of state.
Yeah, I don't know that we have it posted on our website, we have several copies, actually copies upstairs.
Yeah, the, the change is coming. So there could be stuff that's going on in the store that's not gonna be coming to the store. Right, some things you're gonna be able to go to at the board's office, so.
Well, it's not like both of the views we did tonight are gonna be considered lot line adjustments in the future.
Yeah, those.
And those would not come available.
Correct, those could be in the street.
So you do not. I would bring it out, it was historic, but we're not even needing, needing to refer to them as often.
Yeah, it could have been on the table until that, that they've been adopted and then the next.
I agree with that, I, I would think, you know, we're pretty probably in the midst of new.
Yeah, I mean, we. If all goes well, maybe the zoning update will be adopted by November, hopefully. Um, so if you're comfortable waiting that long, that's okay.
Yeah. Okay, good.
I will just. Is that?
I was just saying, anybody else. They're just.
Will they be, um. Off select that, so come in front of us if they want to.
We haven't discussed that, but yeah.
I mean, I'm not advocating.
We're, we built in, the proposal is to build in a provision of it, you know, that exceeds that top part level in, in reviewing it. They can bomb it up to the planning board still, so.
I mean, I'm assuming most people probably prefer to administrative review.
Yeah.
But I don't know if there's people who maybe, it's like you guys say now. They, if they like, they peel it off the.
Yeah, essentially, okay, they, and that, yeah. They can peel them off the ladder.
Yeah, that's, I don't know. Nice question. Two second.
I can say.
All in favor?
I agree.
Thank you.